Welcome to the last Monday night, July 19th, 2021 virtual session of the Lake Forest City Council. Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Admiral Mayor Penderlyon.
Here.
Alderman Morris.
Here.
Alderman Karas.
Here.
I'm sorry, Alderman, uh, Ronald.
Here.
Alderman Notes.
Yeah.
Alderman Preschlag.
Here.
Alderman Gushkarian.
Here.
Alderman Bushman.
Here.
Alderman Webber.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Uh, please join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, uh, in accordance with state statute, I've made a determination that it was not practical or prudent to schedule an in-person city council meeting because of the COVID-19 pandemic, which is why this July 19th, 2021 city council meeting will be held remotely. Our next meeting on August 2nd will be held in person. This will be our last remote meeting. Also, if you are dealing with the agenda that was passed out earlier, well, late last week, uh, we've changed the agenda a bit. So we're going to hear new business prior to the omnibus agenda. First item on the agenda is report of city officers, comments by the mayor. I'm just going to make one quick comment. Uh, well, I'll make a general comment first. We have a very full agenda tonight. There are some potentially meaty issues here. I would encourage everybody to keep your comments crisp and pointed and stay at the appropriate level of detail. Uh, otherwise, we may be here for a very long time tonight. Most of you would have, should have received, most citizens should have received their blue cards from the assessors offices from various townships over the last few days. I know I received mine from West Deerfield last week. Uh, once you receive that notice, you have, all citizens, uh, all property owners have 30 days to file any appeal of their, uh, assessed valuation. So I would encourage everybody to take a look at that. Uh, most of us have a pretty good idea of what our houses are really worth. Uh, and, uh, if you think there's a discrepancy, please, uh, please get your appeal filed ASAP. Uh, you will lose the chance, uh, you know, 30 days, well, not quite 30 days from now, about probably 20 days from now at this point. Uh, the Lake County website, uh, Lake County Collector website, uh, Lake County, and then the township assessors websites are, have lots of information about how to file appeals. Uh, and that's all I have to add tonight. Um, next item on the agenda is comments by the city manager.
Great. Thank you very much, Mayor and members of the city council. Good evening and just echoing, uh, some comments made by the mayor earlier. I'm thrilled to be able to do this virtually for the last time and we look forward to seeing everyone, uh, full-time in person beginning next month. Um, on tonight's omnibus agenda, you'll find consideration of a renewal agreement with the village of Glenview for emergency dispatching services and recognizing that current aldermen weren't around when this relationship was initially formed, although, uh, Mayor, you were probably around on the council.
Yes.
I, I've asked Elizabeth, uh, Hollab to provide a brief presentation to just review the history of the partnership, uh, to make sure the council is aware and then to also summarize the highlights of the proposed agreement before you tonight. Before I turn it over to her though, I just want to thank, uh, first our partners in Glenview, um, specifically Dispatch Center Director Brett Reynolds and Village Manager Matt Formica for their good faith efforts in working with us to reach an agreement, uh, amicable to all parties. Uh, and I also want to thank on our end, our chiefs Carl Waldorf and Pete Seibert for all of their assistance addressing the operational issues throughout our negotiations. Uh, and, and also importantly to Elizabeth Hollab, who was absolutely instrumental, uh, throughout the entire negotiation to ensure Lake Forest taxpayers receive the most favorable terms possible. So, uh, with that, I'll let Elizabeth walk through the specifics, but I just want to express my support for the agreement before you. I think the continued partnership with Glenview, uh, will provide, uh, will continue to provide exceptional service while saving our taxpayers considerable money and I'm pleased to continue the relationship with them for years to come, uh, pending council consideration. So with that, I'll turn it over to Elizabeth.
Thank you very much, City Manager Wishaf, for those introductory comments. I have just a few slides to go through. Um, the first slide, Diane, if you want to go ahead to the next slide, um, is just to provide a little bit of context and background, um, for all of the council members. So in fiscal year 2015 and that budget, um, the city had 10 full-time employees and a budget of just over $1.2 million to provide dispatch services for police and fire. That was done locally. Um, and we knew, we had identified in the capital plan significant capital upgrades that were needed, um, to update and upgrade the 911 equipment being used uh, in the police, um, department, uh, facility. So in 2012, a feasibility study, um, was developed regarding 911 consolidation. The communities of Lake Bluff, Highland Park and Lake Forest went in together uh, and hired a consultant in order to conduct this feasibility study. The first phase of the study was completed in April 2013. Um, and the, the most significant finding of phase one was that there was significant cost savings potential from the consolidation of local agencies banding together for dispatch services. Um, as of December 2013, phase two was complete of that study and it really focused on three particular scenarios for consideration by the participating agencies. And so December 17th of 2013, there was a joint meeting of the governing boards of Lake Bluff, Highland Park and Lake Forest to re, to, uh, receive and, and discuss the findings of the feasibility study and to discuss the three scenarios, um, contemplated. Uh, in January of 2014, uh, formal meetings were conducted by each community um, to approve negotiations for the preferred scenario coming out of that joint meeting in December, what, which was to consolidate 911 operations. House those operations in Highland Park and using Glenview employees. So it was a consolidation, but also an intergovernmental agreement with the village of Glenview who would contractually provide those dispatch services to Lake Bluff, Highland Park and Lake Forest. In April 2014, the Lake Forest City Council approved that agreement with the village of Glenview. Next slide. So a lot of work had to be accomplished. Um, and this just provides some of the benefits identified as part of the consolidation. Um, for the five-year, initial five-year period of the intergovernmental agreement, uh, it was anticipated that the city would see cost savings of $1.67 million. In addition, as part of the consolidation, radio frequency improvements would be made, which would improve the communications between the agencies. So Highland Park and Lake Forest could better communicate with each other. The consolidation also provided full redundancy. So, um, creating a dispatch center in Highland Park that would serve the consolidated agencies provided a unique opportunity for there to be redundancy between the Glenview station for dispatch and the Highland Park station. So the system was created so that all the operations could be conducted at one or the other location, but optimally a portion of them are provided in Glenview and a portion in Highland Park. And as part of the discussions with village of Glenview, it was determined that Glenview would provide non-emergency call handling. So that was a significant advantage also to the participating agencies. So the graph there just shows the cost projections over the initial five-year period with the status quo of, of the city of Lake Forest providing all dispatch services within house staff compared to the proposed, um, expenses with the Glenview dispatch services agreement. I would just note that the, the fiscal year 15 number, we had certain startup costs that were incurred in that first year and the capital improvements that were slated for fiscal year 16 for the city uh, were moved and advanced into fiscal year 15 so that those, those capital expenses, those improvements could be made across the system for all participating agencies. And, uh, as I noted on the previous slide, the city council approved the agreement in April 2014. The system went live September 11th of 2014. So an incredible amount of work was done in a five-month period. Um, and your departments, police, fire, uh, information technology and finance all contributed to that and we worked with the, the respective departments in each of the participating agency. I would also add that Highwood ended up coming on board and was also a participant of the initial consolidation. Next slide. Um, the current agreement with the village of Glenview expires December 31st, 2001. And so with that, um, expiration pending, um, the participating agencies formed a dispatch services IGA working group. Um, the working group had a representative from Highland Park, from Highwood, from Lake Bluff and Lake Forest. Um, and the working group had representation from administration, finance and police departments. Those discussions with the Glenview, um, public safety department occurred from December 2020 through July 2021. And as a result of those discussions, um, a recommendation of the dispatch services IGA working group is, um, presented for, for consideration of each agency. Um, the recommendation of the working group was to extend, uh, the current dispatch services agreement seven years, so to cover, uh, calendar year January 1, 22 through calendar year 28, so to 12, 31, 28. And the negotiated cost increases for the North Center agencies, North Center being Highland Park, Highwood, Lake Bluff and Lake Forest, was a 3% increase for calendar year 22 and a 3.75% increase each year for calendar years 23 through 28. That increase ended up being, um, negotiated and agreed to by the working group primarily, um, due to the fact that the majority of the expenses under the dispatch services agreement is personnel. Um, and across the board, all of the participating agencies are the same personnel increases, um, with salaries being more modest, but pension and insurance increases certainly pushing that overall personnel cost increase into the 3.5 to 4% range. Um, so the working group felt the 3.75% was, um, was agreeable.
Now, to jump in, I don't want to interrupt Elizabeth's presentation, but just for frame of reference, the council will recall, last year, uh, you approved a modified intergovernmental agreement with the village of Lake Bluff for EMS services and that agreement calls for a 4% annual increase. So the rates we're receiving here are more competitive than, than that agreement. Sorry, Elizabeth.
That's all right. Thank you. Um, the, all current services are included in the base fee. I would just note that as we, uh, went live and kind of worked through this consolidation over years, there, there were some add-on services that got tacked on, um, that each agency agreed was important. So Glenview agreed to roll all of those add-ons into the base fee, um, which makes the 3% increase in the first year actually a little smaller because of the, the rolling in of those add-ons. And then a value add, so, um, based on the discussions of the working group with the village of Glenview, Glenview has agreed to provide analytic services to the participating agencies. So we'll be able to get that in both data and map format um, and be able to provide analysis from year to year and from agency to agency that, uh, the working group felt was a, a significant, uh, enhancement to the services provided by Glenview. Next slide. So this is the, um, financial projections over the entire period. So starting in fiscal year 15 and going through the proposed extension period of fiscal year 28. Um, and this shows actual, uh, expenses through fiscal year 21 and then projections for 22 through 28. Uh, and you can see the comparison, um, between the consolidated format and the, um, status quo, which was the city providing their own dispatch services. Um, that savings, uh, continues through, uh, the extension period and the total forecasted savings from fiscal year 15 through fiscal year 28 for Lake Forest alone is projected at 5.76 million. So this has certainly been a great example of, uh, agencies working together, collaborating and, uh, finding a way to provide services to the residents in a more cost-effective and fiscally sustainable manner. So next slide is the working group recommendation, which is to authorize the mayor and city manager to execute documents extending the dispatch services agreement with the village of Glenview for calendar years 22 through 28. Um, and I would just note that as included in the write-up, this is a joint recommendation of your city manager, police chief, fire chief and finance director. I'll be happy to entertain or ask, or answer any questions you have.
I'd like to add one more, uh, item here that wasn't really brought out, but was a significant consideration at the time, and I think it's proved out. The, the, having a larger team, having us, you know, having the scale of this operation be so much larger. Um, one of the challenges we dealt with, when we had 10 people doing this on a 24-hour-a-day, seven-day-a-week basis, was motivating, uh, managing, career pathing, training, uh, providing adequate bench strength. Uh, you know, all of that was a serious challenge with a 10-person staff operating 24/7. Um, with a much larger organization, you have the ability to have much more robust training regimens, performance management, um, you know, employee retention, career paths. I mean, all the things that come with having a much more robust organization and it's in addition to being less expensive. So it's really been a, a tremendous benefit to the city. There was a lot of angst about it at the beginning in terms of, oh, I'm, some of our residents were used to calling 911 and talking to Ruthie, you know, uh, for extended periods of time on a Tuesday night, uh, you know, when she was between calls. So that kind of thing went away. People didn't like that idea. Uh, they were afraid people wouldn't know where they were or where the, where, what, you know, they wouldn't know the streets in town. All of that has been, uh, uh, you know, is way in the past at this point and it's been an enormously successful operation, so.
Okay. Well, thank you, Elizabeth. If there are no additional questions for either Elizabeth or myself, then that would conclude my report for this evening.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is an opportunity for the citizens to address the city council on non-agenda items. Uh, Joe, could you please put up the slide? Okay, people can, uh, citizens who would like to comment about non-agenda items, we will have some public comment on some of the other items later in the evening, uh, but could call 847-810-3643 or use the raise hand function on, uh, on Zoom. So wait a minute while, uh, we see if anybody's calling in or has a comment.
Mr. Mayor, there are no raised hands at this time.
Mr. Mayor, we have no callers at this moment.
Thank you. Uh, then the next item on the agenda is committee reports. We have a report from the finance committee, which will be, um, a public hearing on the city's annual appropriation ordinance. I need a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, uh, could you please, uh, call the roll?
Alderman Morris.
Aye.
Alderman Karas.
Aye.
Alderman Ronald.
Aye.
Alderman Notes.
Aye.
Alderman Preschlag.
Aye.
Alderman Gushkarian.
Aye.
Alderman Bushman.
Aye.
Alderman Webber.
Aye.
APA, 0A, motion carries.
Thank you. Uh, do we have a presentation on this or is this, this, this is a second, second reading?
No presentation, Mayor Penderlyon, just a couple of comments. You did, uh, provide first reading of the appropriation ordinance at your June meeting. Um, this is the legal mechanism for the expenditure of public funds. Although you approve, approve your annual budget, the appropriation ordinance is the legal mechanism to appropriate those public funds and allow those expenditures. Um, it does include rollovers. You have an updated rollover list from fiscal year 21 that's been updated since the June meeting. Um, and other than that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the council? Okay, there is an opportunity here for public comment. Let me put up the slide again. Okay, public comment on the public hearing for the city's annual appropriation ordinance. Members of the public can dial 847-810-3643 or use the raise hand function on Zoom.
Mr. Mayor, there are currently no raised hands.
Thank you, Biddy.
Mr. Mayor, we have no callers at this time.
Okay, in that case, I would ask for a motion to close the public hearing?
I'm moved.
Second. Second.
Okay, uh, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Morris.
Aye.
Alderman Karas.
Aye.
Alderman Ronald.
Aye.
Alderman Notes.
Aye.
Alderman Preschlag.
Aye.
Alderman Gushkarian.
Aye.
Alderman Bushman.
Aye.
Alderman Webber.
Aye.
APA, 0A, motion carries.
Thank you all. With that completed, we now have, uh, consideration of the annual appropriation ordinance for fiscal year 2022 and approval of rollovers, final reading, uh, now that the public hearing is complete. Uh, if there are no comments from the council, could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Morris.
Aye.
Alderman Karas.
Aye.
Alderman Ronald.
Aye.
Alderman Notes.
Aye.
Alderman Preschlag.
Aye.
Alderman Gushkarian.
Aye.
Alderman Bushman.
Aye.
Alderman Webber.
Aye.
APA, 0A, motion carries.
Thank you very much. Uh, the next item on our agenda is a report, uh, from the finance committee chair, uh, Alderman Morris about the GFOA certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting uh, and award presentation. These are always better if we could do them in person, but, uh,
Exactly. Well, well, there we go. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this is the GFOA's certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. This is the 42nd consecutive year that the city of Lake Forest has been awarded this certificate. Um, and it's for our fiscal year 2020 comprehensive annual financial report. And as I mentioned in the past when we've talked about this, this is a very impressive award because as many of you may know, in Illinois, there are nearly 7,000 units of government, local government in the state, and only 361 of those organizations are receiving this award. So it's really a testimony to our finance department and Director Hollab and the, the work that they do on our behalf to report out our financial results. So thank you, uh, Elizabeth and to the department. And then along with that, there's a certificate of achievement, um, that goes with the annual, uh, award of financial reporting that's presented by the GFOA. And as you know, in the past, we've gotten this award. Uh, Diane Hall, our assistant finance director, has received that award. And it's because of the liaison that she provides to the department, uh, with the audit firm. She coordinates all of the audit, uh, processes and probably is a stalwart in the preparation of the budget, um, not, not to say the least, is the financial reporting at the end of the year. So, uh, thank you, Diane. I wish I was there to hand you and shake your hand and get a picture, but perhaps, uh, next year. So thank you very much and those conclude my remarks.
Thank you. Congratulations once again. And, and it's not that this, these reports have stood still either. We've all seen how much they get better every year.
Yeah, better and better.
Being in the top 5% of the state, uh, on this is, is, uh, quite an achievement.
It is. Thank you.
Uh, the next item is consideration of an ordinance providing for the issuance of not to exceed 8.5 million of general obligation refunding bond series 2021 for the purpose of refunding certain outstanding general obligation bonds of the city, providing for the levy and collection of a direct annual tax sufficient to pay the principal of an interest on said bonds, authorizing and directing the execution of an escrow agreement in connection with the issuance of said bonds and authorizing the sole, the sale of said bonds to the winning bidder thereof. This is first reading and, um, I will, uh, turn it over to Elizabeth Hollab, Finance Director.
Good evening. Thank you. We provided a little bit of a teaser of this in the, in the finance committee meeting immediately proceeding. Um, just a few slides to introduce you to the topic. We're also joined by Dan Forbes from Spear Financial. Um, Dan provides a significant amount of work and assistance to the city as we go through these bond issues. Um, and so he is available to see if you have any questions for him. So as mentioned, we're, uh, requesting, uh, first reading approval of a bond parameters ordinance by the city council this evening. Next slide, Diane. Um, this graph just shows the city's current, um, bond obligations as of April 30th, 21. It's shown by fiscal year and also by funding source. So the blue on the chart is all the current outstanding bond obligations paid from the property taxes. Um, red is, uh, bond debt service related to the water utility. Green is special service areas who have three more years of debt service and that is funded from a specific property tax levy assessed on those property owners each year. And then in purple are the last three years of bond debt service related to bonds issued and supported by a half a percent home roll sales tax of the city. So just to give you a, a kind of an overview, broad view of the city's current bond obligations. Next slide, Diane. Um, what we're, uh, seeking and recommending approval by the city council is to refund or refinance the 2013 geo-bond issue. Um, refunding bonds is very similar to refinancing your mortgage. So, um, in this particular, uh, instance, um, we've got $9,715,000 that was issued in 2013. Those were actually refunding bonds. It was a refunding of the 2010 A bond issue, um, that was issued to finance the construction of the municipal services facility. Uh, its debt service is fully funded from the cit, from the property tax levy each year. And you can see in the chart, the, the debt service, the current and remaining debt service on the 2013 issue. Um, the 2013 issue is callable on or after December 15th, 2021. So as we mentioned at the finance committee meeting, the city did a wildly successful refunding in December of 2019 um, at a very, very low interest rate, achieved a lot of savings for, um, property taxpayers in Lake, Lake Forest, but because of the call date of 12, 15, 21, this 2013 issue could not be included in the refunding in 2019. Um, the remaining maturities of fiscal year 22 through fiscal year 33 on the 2013 issue have interest rates of 3 to 4%. So we're looking to capitalize on a, a continued low interest rate environment and refund these at an even lower interest rate and achieve savings, um, again, as we did in 19. Next slide. Um, a bond parameters ordinance is a little different than a normal bond issue. We did do this in December of 2019 as well. Typically, what you'll have is we'll have the bond sale, the day of, of a council meeting will present to you the bid results and ask you to approve a bond ordinance as part of that evening's city council agenda. However, due to some timing constraints with the city council calendar and the desire to, um, to get to the market as quickly as possible in the event interest rates rise, uh, we're requesting that the council approve a bond parameters ordinance, which sets forth the structure or the requirements that must be met for the bond issue to proceed. So the specified criteria in the bond parameters ordinance this evening um, is a bond issue that is not going to exceed $8.5 million. It is not going to occur later than February 2nd of 2022. It will have debt service not later than December 15th of 2032. So we don't want to draw the maturity out, uh, a longer- So we don't want to draw the maturity out a longer period of time than the current 2013 issue. Annual debt service would not be more than $1.5 million per year. The reason why we included that is that we're working with Spear Financial to make sure that the structure of the debt is optimally structured for the City of Lake Forest to achieve the savings and provide continuity for the tax levy and the structure of the tax levy going forward. And then finally, the most important criteria is that the net present value of the debt service savings as a result of the issuance of the new bonds would not be less than 5% of the principal amount of the refunded bond. So this ensures that you'll realize the savings from the bond refunding that you are hoping to achieve. If these criteria are not met, either through changes in the bond market or the bid auction results on that day not meeting requirements, then staff is not authorized to proceed with the bond issue. Next slide. And this is just providing the current timeline. So this is subject to change. But we have worked with Spear Financial, our municipal financial advisor, and Chapman and Cutler, our bond counsel, to draft the preliminary official statement and the bond ordinance included in your packet this evening. Today, we have scheduled first reading on parameters ordinance. If that is approved, then tomorrow, a request for rating would be provided to Moody's Investor Service to begin the process of rating the proposed bond issue. We would hope to achieve that Moody's rating call and review sometime between July 26 and August 6. On your August 2nd City Council agenda, we would include final approval of the bond parameters ordinance. We don't anticipate any changes from the document you have this evening. And then if that was approved on August 4th, the final official statement would be sent to print. Spear would, you know, structure the bond sale, bond auction. We would receive a Moody's rating by August 16th. The current tentative date for the bond sale is August 19th. If that's successful, the bond parameters are achieved with the auction. We would go forward with bond closing on September 15th. And then those proceeds would be put in escrow until December 15th, when the refunded bonds can actually be redeemed and called through the paying agent. Next slide. So as mentioned at the beginning, our recommendation is that the City Council provide first reading approval of the bond parameters ordinance. As noted, Dan is on the line and available for any questions for either he or I about the proposed refunding.
Any questions from the council?
That makes sense.
I have one question. Elizabeth, that 5%, that limit of 5%, how many dollars is that?
So Diane, I'm going to turn it over to you. I know you've done a new run very recently on current market conditions.
So can you hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. The answer is 5% of refunded principal would be $400,000 because we're refunding about 8 million in bonds. Currently, we expect or we would hope to have at least a million dollars under current market conditions, but things can change in the next month. My only comments are that in the last few weeks, interest rates and yields that have been at historic lows have risen a little this year and come back down. And we actually are selling the bond issue. We're in the middle of selling that, and we'll price it tomorrow for Central Lake County, the joint action water. And the rates that are assumed in the numbers for a million dollar savings are about 25 basis points conservative to what we would expect those bonds to sell at tomorrow morning.
So it sounds like we should hurry up. What's your doing? Alderman Goshkarian.
Thank you, Mayor. Dan or Elizabeth or even Jed, looking at these potential savings and then bringing into mind the discussion about the Moody's call and our current bond rating status, hopefully we stay AAA and one would assume that we would. Does this refinancing or refunding, this reissue, does that increase our debt capacity in the future because we're paying cheaper money?
Dan, would you like me to take that?
Well, yeah, go ahead, Elizabeth, with respect to the municipal limits that you've set.
Sure. It would reduce future debt service. So it's important to note the savings don't get realized immediately. We realize them over the maturities of the old bonds. But it does reduce the tax levy requirement going forward for that particular issue and provides a little additional flexibility for the council when looking at the tax levy as a whole.
The only thing I would add is that legally, as a home rule unit, there is no limitation, but you self-imposed the limitation you just explained, Elizabeth.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Okay, in that case, I would offer another opportunity for public comment. Joe, could you please put the phone number slide up again? Okay, any member of the public that would like to comment on this proposal? And call eight four seven eight one zero three six four three or use the raise hand function on Zoom. And we'll wait a second here to see if there are any callers.
Mr. Mayor, we have no raised hands at this time.
Mr. Mayor, we have no callers at this moment.
Okay, thank you. I assume no further comments from the council. So I would entertain a motion to approve first reading of the bond ordinance. An online bid is currently scheduled for August 19th. At the August 2nd City Council meeting, a final bond ordinance will be presented to the City Council for consideration that will set forth the parameters under which a bid received on a sale date would be approved following the closing of the bond issue on September 15th. If no bid is submitted on the bond sale date, I'm sorry, if no bid submitted on the bond sale date meets the parameters of the bond ordinance approved on August 2nd, the bids would be rejected and the bond issue would not proceed. Do I have such a motion?
They're moved.
Okay, I have a second. Okay, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Morris.
Hi.
Alderman Karis.
Hi.
Alderman Ronald.
Hi.
Alderman Notes.
Hi.
Alderman Pushlag. Alderman Goshkarian.
Hi.
Alderman Weber.
Hi. Hi.
Alderman Weber.
Hi.
APA, zero, may, motion carries.
Thank you. It's a good thing to be vigilant about this and take these opportunities when they present themselves. We've been very successful at this in the past decade. The next item is approval of an additional fiscal year 2021 transfer out of the general fund as directed by the City Council in the estimated amount of 4.26 million to fund one-time expenditures to be determined at a later date. This is going to be presented by Elizabeth Hollab. These are the fruits of our good fortune last year, so.
Thank you, Mayor. Diane, you can go ahead and move to the next slide. So as noted by Mayor Panelyan, we are recommending City Council approval of an additional transfer out of the general fund for fiscal year 21. So fiscal year runs May 1 to April 30th. So the last few months, the Finance Department has been preparing financials for year-end close. We accrue revenues and accrue accounts payable to make sure that revenues and expenditures are reported in the correct fiscal year. Even though we pay expenses or receive revenues after April 30th, if they're attributable to fiscal year 21, we're booking them back as part of year-end closing. All the financials have been prepared now for audit, and I just want to throw out another recognition for Diane Hall because she does do the lion's share of this work. And she does work as the city's liaison to the independent auditor. Audit field work began on July 5th, and we are looking like we're going to wrap that up by the end of this week. And so this really presents the last opportunity for us to change any of the fiscal year 21 financials. And so we're bringing this to you to consider because the general fund has completed and ended the year with a surplus more than we projected in the March Budget Workshop. Next slide. So it's important, I think, to kind of look back at the development of the fiscal year 21 budget and kind of understand part of the reason why we're here today with this conversation. So March 12th, 2020 was the fiscal year 21 budget workshop with the City Council. This is when we presented the preliminary and proposed fiscal year 21 operating budget for the committee, Finance Committee's consideration. Within days, March 16th, four days later, City Offices closed as a result of the coronavirus pandemic. And a few days after that, March 20th is when Governor Pritzker issued his initial stay-at-home order related to the pandemic. So we knew that the fiscal year 21 budget that was presented on March 12th clearly needed some revision. So we spent the next month going to work and trying to make very early projections and forecasts as to how this might affect the city's finances. At the April 20th City Council Finance Committee, you received various scenarios of different projections on what might impact revenues and expenditures and gave staff some direction on how to modify the fiscal year 21 budget. That was then brought back to the City Council on May 4th and was approved with the amendments agreed to on April 20th. So fast forward, March 2021, we provided as part of the fiscal year 22 budget, operating budget workshop, our current, at the time, year-end forecast for how we thought the general fund might end fiscal year 21. We indicated that we were being fairly conservative on our projections, and we thought it would be higher and that we might be back with good news in July, which is why we're here. So as of July, we have final revenues and expenses for fiscal year 21, and we're going through the audit process with those financials. Next slide. So the obvious question is, how did this happen? We certainly never anticipated we would be coming to council with an additional surplus of 4.2 million dollars. So I have just a few quick slides to just summarize the significant differences from what you saw in March. So the first slide here is sales tax. So I've included in these charts two years of actual experience, giving you fiscal year 19 and fiscal year 20 actuals. What our original budget was for fiscal year 21, what the final approved budget was for 21, what we presented as a forecast in March, and what our preliminary actual is. So you can see kind of from beginning to end where we ended up in particular categories. So sales tax, you can see 19 was 2.1 million, 20 was 2.6, the item to note about 20. Fiscal year 20 is when we received the approximately $400,000 one-time sales tax. That was a blip. And so I showed that, delineated that separately on fiscal year 20. And then budget projections, original and modified. We certainly anticipated the shutdown order, stay-at-home order in the pandemic was going to significantly derail sales tax revenues for the city. So we were very conservative and anticipated a significant reduction in that revenue for fiscal year 21. In March, we were running strong and we anticipated, you know, that we were bouncing back faster. But the important thing on sales taxes is that there's a 90-day lag for reporting. So at the March forecast, we only had actuals through November. So we still had five more months, and especially December, we didn't know what was going to happen with the holidays. And so we were somewhat modest in our forecast for sales taxes. So we don't receive April sales taxes until July. So that's when we know our final number. And so based on April sales taxes received in July, we're looking at a preliminary actual of 2.15 million. Actually, better than fiscal year 19 actual and about the same as fiscal year 20 if you exclude the one-time revenue that we saw. So that's sales tax. Next slide. Income tax. Income tax, as you saw on the monthly COVID-19 financial forecast updates, has just been a real eye-opener. We anticipated that this revenue would also be significantly impacted by the pandemic. So you can see the two years' actuals, the original and modified budget, and what our March forecast was. It was still coming in strong. The enhanced unemployment benefits are taxable in Illinois. So every time those enhanced unemployment benefits was extended, that was additional revenue to the city. So you can see the March forecast of 1.7 million and the preliminary actual, now that we have all months for fiscal year 21 included, 2.35 million. The one thing I would note on income tax is that the Biden administration did buy that the first $10,200 in unemployment benefits for '22, so for taxes, but fiscal year '22 for us is non-taxable. So we know that this will result in a reduction of income tax in fiscal year '22, but we have no way to estimate what that amount is going to be. So we know that both the federal government and the Illinois Department of Revenue are taking tax returns that had already been filed and automatically pushing a refund back out to the impacted taxpayers. And so we will see that in future months of income tax revenue. We just don't know what that's going to be yet. Next slide. Building permits was another area. We did not actually include a reduction in building permit revenue. You can see we stood with the original budget for building permits because we felt it was conservative enough. But remarkably, development has continued throughout the pandemic, very, very strong revenues. We were forecasting in March well over budget, but came in even better than that at 1.7 million for fiscal year 20. Next slide. This is just other general fund revenue. So I just, you know, provided the COVID-19 grant on a separate line item fiscal year 20. We had a very small grant from Irma of 2,500. But as you know, we received in total about 899,000 in Karis funding through county. A portion of that was provided to the library to offset some of their COVID expenses. So a net of 849,000 to the general fund unbudgeted revenue, we've had it forecasted in March. So it doesn't really count in the recommendation today, but is noteworthy nonetheless. And then you look at all other general fund revenue, and that is graphically presented fairly constant. We had a small COVID-19 impact forecasted, lowered projections for parking revenue and interest income. And most of those reductions were realized. And you can see we were estimating 31.2 million in March, and we came in at 31.9 million. Next slide. And this just looks at expenses. So the general fund expenses, as you know, personnel costs are overwhelming majority of the general fund budget, about 70% to 75% each year. You can see where those actuals stood in the prior two fiscal years, where we were from original budget to final budget. Just a methodology reminder that in March, the original budget doesn't include the cost of the compensation adjustment. And then once that's approved by the finance, we put that in the final budget. So that's the difference between original budget and final budget. March forecast, we were anticipating some vacancy savings from natural personnel turnover throughout the year. And we actually came in right as forecasted, so 26.1 million forecasted in March, and we were right on for preliminary actual. Then you look at all the other expenses, supplies, contractual services, utilities, those types of expenses. And you can see that we were forecasting a modest savings between And you can see that we were forecasting a modest savings between the final budget and the March forecast. Came in fairly well under, so other expenses in the general fund came in 600,000 less than the March forecasted numbers. And so that went to the bottom line as savings. And then just a rollover because this is going to be important on a future slide. In your final fiscal year 21 budget, the city council. Reserved a million dollars in fiscal year 20 surplus. Included that in the rollovers for fiscal year 21 to provide COVID stimulus, 500,000 to other city funds as needed. And 500,000 to the community at large. At the time undefined ended up being two specific COVID programs for businesses in the city. That was budgeted at a million, we thought we would spend 700,000 in March, we actually spent 617,000 of that. So a small savings there. Next slide. And so this is just a summary table of the items on the previous slides and then just focus on the transfers to other funds and the net surplus deficit. So. Transfers to other funds in fiscal year 19, there was a significant general fund surplus and the council proved to transfer to the capital fund. In fiscal year 20, a $3 million transfer was approved based on year end results in the budget. And then again, that net surplus deficit of 1.2 million included the 1 million the council opted to hold back and preserve for fiscal year 21 support. The original budget was a surplus for fiscal year 21, but the final budget once adjusted. Was a deficit of just, oh, just under 1.1 million made up almost entirely by the 1 million COVID rollover. March forecast, we knew we were coming in better. So the council approved an increase in the transfer to the capital fund from 300,000 to 1,050,000. We did make that additional $750,000 transfer. But with all the preliminary actual numbers now being audited, we now forecast a surplus in the general fund of 3 million. Going forward, one more slide. We look at this from a general fund forecast standpoint. So if you look at the blue column, this is the preliminary actual numbers. The 4.877 is the net surplus before transfers. We have made transfers of 1,835,000 as directed by the council and that gives us the net 3 million. Surplus still available for consideration this evening. And then added to that is the 1.2 million that the fiscal year 20. Fund balance was allowed to increase, so it was 1.2 million more than the fiscal year 19. Surplus to provide funds, you can see the 1 million denoted below the line to support. Based on unknowns related to COVID-19. So if you add that 3 million surplus to the 1.2, you get the 4.26 million dollar number. That is now recommended for the city council to consider being transferred out of the general fund to other purposes. Down at the bottom, you can see that the fund balance as a percentage of revenue approving that additional transfer would reduce. Year end fund balance as a percentage of revenue from 83.4 to 72.5, but still. Certainly a very good. Fund balance reserve as a percentage of revenue. One more slide, I think. Yeah, so the recommendation of staff is for city council to consider an additional transfer out of the general fund for fiscal year 21. It's in an estimated amount of 4.26 million, only subject to potential changes that might come up during the audit. So the 4.26 may change slightly. But we'll be very close to the 4.26 million projected. The staff recommendation is to transfer $750,000 to the Perkin Public Land Fund. And 750,000 to the Housing Trust Fund. Those two funds were called out during the fiscal year 22 budget process as funds that were drawing down fund reserves. For their fund objectives without an ongoing sustainable fiscal. Sustainable revenue source, funding source. And so the recommendation is to make $750,000 transfers to both of those funds to allow those programs to continue. Until the long term sustainability of those two programs can be further analyzed. And then the remainder of an estimated 2.76 million dollars being transferred to the capital fund. This would become available for capital expenditures in fiscal year 23 and would be discussed at the November capital budget workshop. That is the end of my presentation and I will try to answer any questions.
Questions for Elizabeth?
Hi Elizabeth, I do have one question. First, thank you so much, this is such a thorough and easily accessible presentation, so thanks. I'm wondering if the city benefited off from dominant purveyors of online sales such as, you know, Wayfair and Amazon and Walmart. I know we had talked about even though some big box suppliers like Best Buy and Home Depot over the past year, there's, you know, just been an enormous number. Of purchases made online versus in store. I know we had talked about at one point that that might be changing, could you address that for us, please?
Sure, excellent question, Alderman Karras. That, there's a legislative change that went into effect January 1st of 2021. And online sales currently are placed into the, the use tax fund. And so use tax is then allocated out to local governments on a population basis. And so those online sales previous to January 1st, 21, were being received by the city, but on a per capita basis rather than a destination. Basis, so effective January 1st. Online retailers are now required to charge the, the sales tax rate applicable to the destination address. So they must record that as a Lake Forest sale. Based on a Lake Forest purchaser address and then the city receives all of that revenue. So in these few months of January to April now. There's been a revenue shift out of use tax and into the city's sales tax. So most of that. We'll see a full year next year. Most of that hasn't, we haven't really assessed the full impact of it. It is definitely creating a shift, we know it's going to reduce use tax revenue and increase sales tax revenue. We think based on, you know, transaction history in Lake Forest. It should be a net positive to the city, so we should see more sales tax revenue generated from online sales than we received in use tax.
Do we, do we have exposure to, you just said the, the history of those types of sales, do we, we actually have exposure to, to what that, that history is? I found that interesting of what, or what do you?
So, no, we don't. It was just based on the community profile, we anticipated that. We would see more sales tax generated than we were receiving on a per capita basis through use tax. But definitely a very small impact in 21, it's going to have a big impact on 22 and we'll just have to analyze the shift.
Thank you.
Sure.
Other comments, Alderman Rumel?
What do you attribute this increase in sales tax? Was it? It wasn't really attributable then to online sales particularly? Was it, were people really shopping more local or, or, or what, what was the dynamic there?
So a small part of it is the first few months of the sales tax from online sales. But generally what we saw is that sales taxes in Lake Forest rebounded much faster than we thought it would from, from COVID. And so once we got into the December through April sales tax revenues. They were coming in at a fairly significant increase over the same month prior year.
Well, that's, you know, that speaks well of our residents who obviously stepped up to support. Our local businesses in a big way rather than doing online sales, which I think most of us assumed would be the common practice during COVID. So, you know, kudos to us as a community for stepping forward and doing that and truly supporting our local businesses, that's significant.
Alderman Weber?
Quick add on to Alderman Karras and Alderman Rumel. As a business owner, I think the business owners really strive to reach and meet the needs. Of the Lake Forest residents too and being more accessible, whether it was through e-commerce and setting up online portals so people could purchase that way. And so I think it was a real team effort to keep our Lake Forest downtown and businesses a special place if they are.
Alderman Bushman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's always great to have surpluses and to be able now to utilize the services by funding these other attributes and, and requirements we have for the city. And certainly I would encourage us to continue to, to look at those opportunities. Just as a point of clarification, Elizabeth, from the one slide, it seems like. You know, when the surpluses, you know, are coming into the FY 2021 numbers, you'd be looking at. A reserve figure of 83.4%. And with the transfer of the funds, it get, it would go to 72.5%. Is that correct?
Correct.
And obviously we've had prior discussions as to what is a, an appropriate or reasonable reserve fund level. And I don't know if any of us have the perfect answer to it. But I do encourage staff to continue as they have in the past to, you know, look at that and try and figure out, you know. What's too high, what's too low and try and get the right balance for that reserve fund that makes sense for the city and its taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you, any other comments? Questions? Okay, if there are no other comments, then I would ask for a motion to approve. An additional fiscal year 2021 transfer out of the general fund as directed by the city council in the estimated amount. Of 4.26 million to fund one time expenditures to be determined at a later date.
So moved through.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Morris?
Aye.
Alderman Karras?
Aye.
Alderman Rumel? I'll come back. Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Kershlag?
Aye.
Alderman Gushkarian?
Aye.
Alderman Bushman?
Aye.
Alderman Weber?
Aye.
Check back in with Alderman Rumel one more time?
Aye.
Thank you. 8A 0A, motion carries.
Thank you, as I mentioned earlier, the next item on our agenda, on our agenda is going to be new business. First item of new business is consideration, consideration of a recommendation from the building review board in support of new designs and plans for the Amberly Woods Courtyard Homes. Waving first reading and granting final approval. This will be presented by Kathy Cerniak, Director of Community Development.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm going to. Share my screen. Are you able to see my screen?
Yes.
Thank you. This is a recommendation to the council from the building review board. Normally, recommendations from the building review board in support of petitions are placed on the city council's omnibus agenda. At the request of the petitioner, McNaughton Development, we have placed this item on the regular council agenda for discussion. I'm going to briefly review. The, the building review board's consideration. And I do know that one or two representatives from McNaughton are with us tonight and would likely want to speak. You may also have a neighbor or two who's, who's interested in this item. So quickly reviewing the timeline, in February of this year, the building review board heard an initial presentation from McNaughton Development. For the 19 vacant lots in the Amberly Woods Courtyard Home Development. This is part of the larger 40 acre Amberly Woods parcel. In addition to the courtyard homes, the original approvals included two condominium buildings, one of which has been built. The other, we do have plans in for review currently. And then the corner parcel at the corner of Route 60 and Saunders Road, which is. Likely going to be developed with mixed use or commercial development. So on February 3rd, the building review board heard a presentation from McNaughton. McNaughton Development recently purchased the vacant 19 lots from Kay Hugmanian. A previous developer who owned all of the sites and constructed two of the five homes that have been constructed on the property. At the February meeting, the building review board really focused on architectural style. The style presented by McNaughton was identified by the developer as a coastal architectural style. The building review board really encouraged the developer to look at the architectural styles, not only. In Amberly Woods, but in the surrounding area and in Lake Forest as a whole. The building review board directed that some further consideration be given to once architectural styles. That all elevations be designed consistent with that style and all architectural detailing, the fenestration, the roof forms. That there be consistency with the chosen style. In February, the building review board also talked about using quality exterior materials, the need for landscape plans and. Encouraging some additional options to be prepared by the developer to offer side load garages. To avoid a situation where all or most of the remaining 19 lots would have front load garages on the street. The developer. Went away, took a few months and came back at the April meeting with significant improvements to the plans. The developer presented four different floor plans. And explained that each of those four floor plans would be available to potential buyers in three different architectural styles. French country, shingle and Tudor styles. The board commended the petitioner for really moving towards styles that are frequently found throughout Lake Forest. The building review board at that meeting encouraged the petitioner to spend a bit more time refining the details. And there was significant discussion about exterior materials. A number of synthetic or manufactured products were proposed by the developer for the siding, for the trim. Fiberglass windows were, were discussed, were proposed. And then there, at that meeting, there was also discussion about the roof material. Asphalt shingle as opposed to cedar roof material, consistent with the five existing homes in the development. In an effort to move this petition along, to assist the developers in coming back to the next meeting with a petition that could. Be fully endorsed by the building review board, the board agreed to appoint a subcommittee of two members. That subcommittee met a couple of times in May, met with the developer, met with staff, had some good discussions, offered some good commentary. There, there was good discussion on, on the parts of all involved in that subcommittee. And the petitioner came back at the June meeting. And at that time, the building review board in a six to zero vote recommended approval of the plans. Subject to conditions, as is often the case. The board endorsed the architectural design selected, the detailing proposed. And they did endorse the exterior materials as proposed by the developer with one exception. Other standard conditions were, were also recommended with respect to landscaping and lighting, which are very common. The building review board did receive, in addition to receiving presentations at all three meetings from the petitioner, the building review board did receive a number of letters from. Property owners within the Amberly Woods Development. Those letters, those received by the building review board, as well as those. Received by the council in the last few days have all been forwarded to the full council. Just to spend a moment. Looking specifically at. The building review board's recommendations with respect to exterior material. The building review board did look carefully at the design guidelines, they did listen carefully to the petitioners. And they also listened very carefully to the neighbors. In the end, as. In the end, as the board most often is charged with doing, they ended up compromising, recognizing that probably no party is completely satisfied. But in this matrix, and I won't go through it piece by piece, you do see the exterior materials that were previously approved for the Amberly Woods courtyard homes, both for the original developer and then for Kay Hugmanian. And then you see the exterior materials as proposed by the petitioner. Significant difference is that the trim fascia soffits in the current homes are all wood. At the petitioner's request, a fiber cement product was approved by the Building Review Board. You will note some other differences. For instance, the existing homes have copper gutters and downspouts. The Building Review Board did recommend approval of aluminum. The shift from aluminum-clad windows, divided light windows to fiberglass windows, the board supported that, recognizing that the fiberglass product really has come a long way. And the primary siding material for both the original approvals and the current recommendation includes stucco and stone. In addition, for McNaughton, the Building Review Board did approve fiber cement shingles, manufactured product, and brick. So again, the Building Review Board felt that some compromises were absolutely appropriate, but they did want to assure that there was some consistency with the five homes, and importantly, with the expectations that the current owners have with respect to how the rest of Amberly Woods will be built out. The options before the council for action tonight, except the Building Review Board's recommendation as presented, again, forwarded to you with a six-zero vote. If you choose to move in that direction, it would be appropriate to waive first reading and grant final approval. The City Council could choose to modify the conditions attached to the Building Review Board's recommendation. If you do that, we would suggest that you grant first reading of the ordinance and then direct staff and the city attorney to modify the conditions and, if appropriate, modify the findings so that the ordinance correctly reflects whatever modifications the council may want to see to those conditions. The third option is that the council can remand the petition back to the Building Review Board. If you do that, we would suggest that you provide some direction as to your expectations with respect to how the Building Review Board should reconsider this. Mr. Mayor, that does conclude my comments. Again, I do believe that the petitioner may want to speak. I would encourage anyone who wants to speak to use the raise hand function or to call in.
Before we take public comment, I'd like to make sure that there are any questions that the council has, comments or questions that the council has that are answered. Okay, hearing none, I would open it up to public comment. Can Joe please put up the phone number yet again? If anybody would like to speak on this subject to the council, please either call 847-810-3643 or use the raise hand function on Zoom.
Mr. Mayor, we have two raised hands. First person, I can identify his name as John E.
Okay. Please try to keep your comments to no more than three minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. My name is John Barry with McNaughton Development, and we very much appreciate this opportunity to address you tonight. We did include a summary of our concerns as part of your package tonight. Little bit about us, this is our first opportunity to build homes in Lake Forest, and we were not familiar with the process of the B and B, or BRB, coming into this. However, working through the process, we feel that both parties, ourself and the city, have been very accommodating to each other, and everybody has made some concessions. We're very happy with the plans as they resulted through the process. And because of that, we would be very disappointed if the issue of these cedar shaped roofs is derailed in the process. From our perspective, these roofs are a matter of taste. Everyone has an opinion on these roofs. We have an opinion as builder. The city has opinions, but most importantly, we feel our future homeowners have opinions. And we believe that the selection of these roofs should be left to the discretion of those purchasers. We especially feel that this is the case in this instance because we believe that we're proposing a much higher quality product with the asphalt shingle than the cedar shake. In addition to the quality, there is also the issue of the expense. Cedar shake has always been more expensive, but even more so than last year where the price of these shingles have gone up over 100%. We don't see the cedar shake providing any discernible value. The fact is quite opposite. We feel the product's inferior and would be detrimental to our sales and that to the long-term value of these homes to the future residents. Spending a considerable amount of money on the cedar shake because the other homes have just, it doesn't make much sense to us. In the end, we're not looking for a big dispute here with the city. However, we thought it was important to bring it to your attention tonight because of the considerable expense to it and the potential or the real downside to our future buyers. So for those reasons, we're requesting that the council eliminate the cedar shake condition as noted in the BRB recommendation. We truly believe if we're given the opportunity to construct these homes without cedar shake, that will provide you with an exceptional product that'll be a great compliment to the city of Lake Forest. We appreciate your attention and consideration, and if you do have any questions of ours, we'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there other, I guess there was at least one other caller?
We have additional raised hands. The next raised hand is Wayne. Identify as Wayne.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. My name is Wayne Urbanic, and I am at 2025 Amberly Courtyard in the courtyard homes. I'm also a vice president of the Amberly Woods and Amberly Courtyard HOA. And the citizens of Amberly Woods and certainly all of Conway Farms have cedar shaped roofs. It is the continuity and cohesiveness of the area, and cedar shaped roofs are part of Lake Forest and are part of this development. And I would say that McNaughton Development should have done their due diligence before they bought the 19 homes, and they would have seen that cedar shaped roofs were part of the original five developments, the condo building and all of Conway Farms. So I would ask the City Council and you, Mr. Mayor, to please deny the petitioner's request. I would ask you to uphold the BRB on their six-to-zero vote. They've had their due diligence, they've had six months, and we, the citizens, have sent you numerous correspondence. We have all attended all of the BRB meetings, and I would ask you again to deny the petitioner. Thank you very much.
We have one additional raised hand, Keith Kreb.
Good evening, everyone. My wife Tracy and I have been residents of Lake Forest for 22 years and owner and occupier of a courtyard home for the last nine years. I would characterize the development as not a troubled development, but a challenge. And I think we need to understand the challenges to understand the context we're making this decision within. And Kathy laid out some of the history, but I think there's some additional context that might be helpful that I'd like to offer. The underlying challenges are really the fact that we have three different zoning types all in a very tight space. We have the commercial property, we have the multifamily condo building, the existing one, and another building that can go in, and then we have single-family homes, all packed in a pretty tight space. And we have five different ownership groups: the existing condo owners, the people with the right to build a second building, the commercial property with Jason Smith, we have McNaughton Home Builders who owns 19 lots, and then we have five existing owners of courtyard homes. With that, there's no catalyst and no vision for this tight space. And the underlying issues in here that I think are really holding back potential buyers, as I've observed over the nine years and had conversations with potential buyers, the fact that there's cut-through traffic to the office and the commercial property on the west end of the lot, and also there's some fear of the unknown of what might go into that commercial property. And those two are a function of that lack of vision and a lack of a catalyst in this tight space. So the underlying issues aren't really being addressed by the rough conversation. I mean, the timing, the market timing right now is really good for McNaughton to increase their probability of success. Their floor plans are much better with all ranch homes who are first-floor masters than the prior developer. And I think both those things are going to help increase the probability of success. But I think what we can do to really drive the probability of success is cut off the cut-through traffic by putting a cul-de-sac in on the west end of Amberly Court, and also having some clearly defined and marketable, clear, shared understanding of what the city would and wouldn't approve to go in on the commercial property that could be put out there for potential homebuyers, something a potential homebuyer could look at and understand, what will and what probably won't be able to go in on that commercial property. So I guess my conclusion is that the cost or the price differential, if that's plus or minus 3%, is not really going to impact the probability of successful development of the remaining 19 lots and eventually the second condo building. What we really need to address is the location issues, not the price issues. We need to address the location issues of the cut-through traffic and the unknown of the commercial property. And if we do those two things, we'll increase the probability of successful development. It's not a plus or minus 3% on the cost or the roof issue that's going to define success. Thank you for the opportunity to share.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kreb. Do we have other members of the public that would like to speak?
There are no additional raised hands.
Okay, thank you. I would bring it back to the council then for any observations or comments. Alderman Notes?
My personal opinion is Amberly came up twice while I was on zoning board, and it has just struggled over the years. When I look at its proximity to the office complex, it's fairly well-isolated from the rest of Conway. My personal opinion is if it's coming down to whether there's asphalt shingles or not, asphalt shingles are not banned in the city. There are many homes, including my own, that have them. For me personally, if there's an opportunity to help get activity on the street energized, I personally am not opposed to acquiescing and having the project move forward with asphalt shingles.
Other comments?
This is Alderman Preschlik. Kathy, I had just a question strategically because I think Mr. Kreb's brought up some really good points just at the macro level, and I'm kind of curious if the comprehensive plan on the 60 corridor that happened a year or so ago had addressed some of the structural issues, and have there been some advances there around zoning or, I guess, some more certainty on the commercial side? I'm just kind of curious on the big-picture issues that he raised, if that was a topic of conversation on that comprehensive planning subcommittee, and if you could just share some perspective on that if there's any.
Yes, absolutely. Amberly Woods was a significant topic of conversation during the comprehensive plan. And actually, both Mr. Kreb and Mr. Urbanic were part of those discussions. The 8.5-acre commercial parcel was talked about as mixed use, it was talked about as destination commercial, and we do currently have a developer who is exploring various options. As part of those options and at the direction of the comprehensive plan, there is support for creating a cul-de-sac at the west end of Amberly Court. It was discussed initially as part of the development, and there was concern about emergency access and really having two ways out. Normally, the city code doesn't permit more than five dwelling units with a single access, but over the years, I think there's been a real movement towards supporting a cul-de-sac. I know former Alderman Reisenberg was very supportive of the cul-de-sac. And as we see the developer bring forward a mixed use or a commercial development for that 8.5-acre parcel, I think the first discussion will be not only the cul-de-sac, but also some burning probably on the east side of that lot to really create a separation from the condominium building to the east. So there has been a lot of conversation. The city can't force a developer to come forward with a plan, but I think there is a good framework in the comprehensive plan. There's a lot of discussion. I think there was more movement prior to the shutdown of Conway Park. I think that has a bit affected the progress of that development. However, the success of the Forester Hotel, I think, has cast a little bit different light on the potential for that corner. So I think those issues are addressed in the comprehensive plan. They certainly weren't discussed by the Building Review Board as part of this petition, but they're very real issues, and as future development discussions occur, I'm sure they will all be discussed and resolved.
Yeah, thanks, Kathy. Appreciate that perspective, and I guess I'll just chime in on how I think about this. I think one of the benefits we have as a community, and a lot of this credit goes to Kathy, around the process that we have, both at the strategic level or at the architectural and review level, is that there's a balance. You're always balancing the property rights of the owner or the developer and the neighbors and the streetscape. And as I take a look and step back and say, well, what's happened here, it's gone through a very thoughtful and judicious process, and I look at the chart of, I guess, developer asks and approvals or acquiescence from the BRB, I really see a healthy process unfold over a period of time based on the calendar that Kathy shared with us. And I look at all the different building elements, and I'm really thankful that people are volunteering on the BRB and the HPC and the other boards that are volunteers but are led through a very thoughtful process. And there really seems to be some compromise here and some give and take. And I am sensitive to the 6-0 ruling and that process and how balanced it is. And this was just the one item that just seemed to flare up. It's really hard to think of this, at least I don't think about it, in a one-off, like shingles or no shingles. I want to take a step back. We're on an executive board here, and this has been a thoughtful discernment. The BRB has gone through a process. It's always well-led by Kathy. Thank you, Kathy. And there's been very much of a compromise to balance all the stakeholders here as I look at the different components of the building elements. And so I'm sympathetic to the free market and And so I'm sympathetic to the free market and all those other things, but to make this successful, I think if we address some of the macro issues and we address some of the consistency on the shingle issue, I think we can be successful here. So I'm inclined not to change the BRB and to just approve it because of those facts and perspective, I guess.
Mayor Mag, make a comment?
Thank you. Yes, Mayor, yes, sir.
First off, I want to thank Mr. Kreb and Mr. Urbannick for speaking with us, as well as the representative from McNauton, and we genuinely wish them success. And sort of echoing Alderman Preschlech's comments, it does appear that there's been a process that's gone through, and it seems like they're working in a very collaborative manner, the developer and the BRB. When I see one of our boards put this amount of time in there and seem to have a unanimous viewpoint, I don't really want to get down into the weeds with them. I think that they're putting their due diligence in there, and there seems to be a good amount of give and take here. My inclination, at the very least, is to agree with the BRB's recommendation. I'd like for the developer to accept that ruling. The only step back, I might say, is there something else they can do moving forward? Is there any worth and value in remanding back to BRB and say, hey, keep talking, because clearly there's been a process that's been gone through here, and it seems to have everybody happy with one sticking item. And so to me, I kind of want to support the BRB. And I think that, again echoing my friend Jim's perspective, they're doing great work, and Director Cerniak is working very, very hard with all parties. And my inclination is just to accept the BRB unless someone thinks that there's another type of compromise out there. I'd like to stand with their recommendation.
Thank you. Alderman Karas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do agree with Alderman Gashkarian and Alderman Preschlech that we have these boards and commissions in place for a reason, and they are the parties, the boards or the bodies that do a great deal of work investigating all aspects of these issues and making recommendations. So I concur with both of them. I am curious, though, I really would like to better understand how it is that a developer, a residential developer who makes such a sizable investment may not be aware that there is a building review board? If you could address that, Kathy?
Sure. I actually recall some early contacts with representatives of McNauton where we did sit downstairs here at our building and have a discussion, and certainly talked about the prior approvals and how any changes to those prior approvals would require review through the building review board, assuming they were of substantial magnitude. And what we saw here is not only material changes, but the architectural styles of the homes, the floor plans of the homes were modified for good reason, to better hit today's market. So my recollection is that we did have that conversation. I can't speak for the developer.
I guess I'm just understanding, I don't know from whom the land is purchased, but the party who oversees that transaction, they should be obviously very well-briefed in the system of Lake Forest City Government. So besides you, before it gets to you, I'm wondering if there is a contact that should have appraised the prospective purchaser of our system?
Alderman Karas, I can tell you that the city council a number of years ago approved a real estate rider, and perhaps that's something that we should circulate, because George, you may be the only one, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, you may be the only one who remembers that. But it is a rider that has been distributed to real estate professionals, and they're asked to provide it to buyers. And I can't quote it word-for-word, but it speaks to the importance of community character and preservation and quality development, and states that the city does have specific processes in place to continue that tradition and guide development. So I would be happy to circulate that.
Okay, that sounds like the ideal solution.
Well, it's already out there. And also, you're dealing here with, and if I could editorialize for a moment, you're dealing here with sophisticated purchasers, knowledgeable, experienced developers. The first thing they do when they get involved in a transaction like this is go and see what the city processes are. So if that didn't happen, I would put that squarely on the developer's shoulders. Alderman Weber?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you to McNauton, thank you to the residents and my fellow Aldermen for their comments thus far. I just wanted to make a brief comment. As someone who's been intimately aware of the Amberly Woods subdivision in its entirety and participating in the Route sixty corridor working group in the past, I think the BRB did a wonderful job in working with them over the last few months, and I would be in support of their recommendations moving forward.
Thank you. Alderman Rumel?
I have to agree with the prior three comments, and I was very impressed with the process that occurred. Not only did the BRB listen to testimony of neighbors and the developer, but they also formed a subcommittee to meet specifically with the developer to try and work out changes. And I think this development has come, when I look back at those original plans that were submitted, and thank you for including all of that in the packet, because I think it helped us understand how far this development has come in the process through the diligent work of the members of the BRB. And that's how the city works, that's what these committees are supposed to do, and the commissioners are there for a reason, and I think they did an excellent job here, and I would absolutely support their recommendation.
Thank you. Alderman Bushman?
Just maybe add a little bit in consensus with much of what's been said. And certainly, I bring myself, like Alderman notes, we spent six years on the BRB, so we have an appreciation of the process and looking at what has gone forth. It's very impressive, very appreciative. It shows a great deal of discernment and review, and we appreciate, Kathy, the slide you shared that shows the effort to compromise, and that's the other point I'd like to emphasize to the developer. We're here to provide the best of product, not to create problems for a developer. And unfortunately, yes, the prices of cedar shakes, you said, have doubled in price. I'm surprised it's only doubled in price hearing about cedar board prices, but all materials have gone up in price, and I think you're going to see that reflected in new home construction. So hopefully, this doesn't stand as a burden or an obstacle to you to have a successful development. And again, the city, I know despite the vote today, if it's to support the BRB, we still look for you to do what we can to have a successful project here.
Alderman Morris?
I would concur with those. In addition, it's great that the review board voted six to nothing, but I also look at what's in the best interest of the city. And with that, I go back to the homeowners, I think, articulating what is in the best interest of themselves in that neighborhood, but also in the city and the consistency of the product. So I concur with my other ultimate on this issue.
Sounds like we have a relatively clear point of view, so I would entertain a motion to approve the recommendation of the building review board and submit it.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Morris?
Aye.
Alderman Karas?
Aye.
Alderman Rumel?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Preschlech?
Aye.
Alderman Gashkarian?
Aye.
Alderman Bushman?
Aye.
Alderman Weber?
Aye.
Eight yeas, zero may, motion carries.
And just to clarify, was that motion to waive first reading and grant final approval of the ordinance?
Yes. I apologize, I didn't read that correctly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm actually quite convinced that the developer will be rewarded with additional margin for this additional, maybe there's disagreement about what quality is, but I think in this community, he'll be rewarded for the consistency and will be paid for it. The next item on the agenda is items for omnibus vote consideration. There are twelve. Number one, approve the extension of the mayor's declaration of a local state of emergency until the next city council meeting. That's the last time we'll have to do this. Two, approve the June twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one city council meeting minutes. Three, approval of July nineteenth, twenty-twenty-one special city council workshop meeting minutes. Four, approval of the check register for the period May twenty-two to June twenty-five, twenty-twenty-one. Five, approval of amendments to the Lake Forest Cemetery Commission investment policy as presented earlier. Six, approval to renew the agreement for enterprise resource management system software maintenance. Seven, approval of both a change order to the agreement with H.W. Lochner, Inc., and an IDOT resolution for additional MFT funds for Phase One design of the Lake and Woodbine Vehicle Bridge in the amount of twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Eight, consideration of ordinances approving recommendations from the building review board, first reading and final approval, if desired by the city council. Nine, consideration of ordinances approving recommendations from the zoning board of appeals, first reading and, if desired by the city council, final approval. And ten, approval of an IDOT resolution and use of motor fuel tax funds in the amount of one hundred and eighty-six thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars for the Everett and Waukegan Road intersection Phase Two base design and the Phase One and Phase Two right-hand turn lane design supplement, and the ratification of expenses related to the additional evaluation of the intersection in the amount of forty-five thousand, three hundred and forty-eight dollars to Civil Tech Engineering, Inc. Number eleven, authorize the mayor and the city manager to execute documents extending the dispatch services agreement between the Village of Glenview and the City of Lake Forest for calendar years twenty-twenty-two through twenty-twenty-eight. And twelve, consideration of a recommendation from the plant commission in support of a special use permit for Lucky Duck, a tapas restaurant proposed in Westwood Center, nine-fifty Northwestern Avenue, if desired by the council, waive first reading and grant final approval of the ordinance. Are there any items that any member of the council would like removed or taken separately? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the twelve omnibus items as presented.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Morris?
Aye.
Alderman Karas?
Aye.
Alderman Rumel?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Preschlech?
Aye.
Alderman Gashkarian?
Aye.
Alderman Bushman?
Aye.
Alderman Weber?
Aye.
Eight yeas, zero may, motion carries.
Thank you, everyone. Next item on the agenda is old business. First, it's consideration of an ordinance amending the City of Lake Forest city code regarding alcoholic beverages. This is final approval. You may recall, we discussed this at our last meeting. Are there comments or questions from the council? Okay, then I would entertain a motion to grant final approval to the ordinance amending the City of Lake Forest city code regarding alcohol beverages.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Morris?
Aye.
Alderman Karas?
Aye.
Alderman Rumel?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Preschlech?
Aye.
Alderman Gashkarian?
Aye.
Alderman Bushman?
Aye.
Alderman Weber?
Aye.
Eight yeas, zero may, motion carries.
Thank you. And the second item of old business is consideration of an ordinance amending the fee schedule to reflect changes to the liquor code. This will also be final approval. We'll have a brief comment by Kurt Asprey, City Attorney, or maybe it's Julie Tappendorf tonight.
No comments unless there are questions.
Okay. There are no questions or comments. I would entertain a motion to approve the amendment to the fee schedule to reflect the changes to the liquor code.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Morris?
Aye.
Alderman Karas?
Aye.
Alderman Rumel?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Preschlech?
Aye.
Alderman Gashkarian?
Aye.
Alderman Bushman?
Aye.
Alderman Weber?
Aye.
Eight yeas, zero may, motion carries.
Okay, thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is items for discussion by council members, comments by council members. I believe Alderman Karas may have something she'd like to introduce.
I do, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I just want to take us back when I was first elected and assumed office in May of twenty-twenty. The mayor asked me to assume the role of chairman of our marketing committee and take the reins from former Alderman Prue Beidler. I was delighted to do that, as you know, because marketing, branding, and communications is my professional background. So I first moved, and the mayor also asked Mark Casquezzi to serve our working committee with me along with Susan Banks at the time, now it's Dana Olson, our new communications manager. So our first step was to bring together a group of members who would serve as volunteers on our marketing committee. We have just a stellar team of talent, and we've been working, we've met eight times since that group came together last, I think, last June. Our first meeting was in September, and again, we've met, convened eight times, and we've established our goals, objectives, the strategy of our team's strategy, which of course we'll continue to assess, and a series of tactics or initiatives that we've been implementing with city staff since the outset of this. So the mayor and I have been talking about a new idea that I would like to propose and see what kind of feedback or reaction there is from the council. The idea is to introduce a new farmer's market, a new Lake Forest farmer's market on the west side of town. And the three primary reasons for a new farmer's market, one is in our conversations with a lot of community residents, residents who have lived in town for a number of years and a great number of new residents in town, they really, one of the key comments or consistent comments made is that everybody's looking for more vibrancy. They are constantly asking, is there anything more we can do as a city to be more like Lake Bluff or Highwood? And I think the translation of that for us is just more ways for us to gather as a community. So that's sort of the principal driver, was to devise some type of an event, a community event, that we could host. At the West Lake Forest train station is the identified spot for this, and the reason for that is so much of our activity, organized activity, is concentrated on the east side of town. I've spoken with both Aldermen in the fourth ward about trying to attract more of our residents to the west side of town. So we've identified the West Lake Forest train station on the north side of the lot as the ideal location for this. And then the third driver really is an opportunity for residents to support local producers, local farmers and bakers. There are a number of people who have small baked businesses, whether they are, a lot of them use commercial kitchens and are selling them online or selling them at local markets, and then maybe some artisans. So the idea for this is Um, and then maybe some artisans. So the idea, um, for this is to, is to try a pilot for maybe six weeks. Um, we have done a number of, taken some initial first steps to understand, um, you know, what are the best? We've been to about ten markets, farmer's markets that we've identified as some of the most, you know, the, the best destination markets around this area. Um, and we've also looked at some of the, um, some of the best, um, markets on both coast, the west coast and the east coast. So I think we have a pretty strong idea of, of what we need to do to make, um, this new market, because yes, we have done this before. Um, make this new market, um, very successful. I think another, um, reason we believe that the time is right to do this. Is because council recently approved, um, uh, permitting food trucks. And so we would incorporate food trucks, um, into this farmer's market. So it would be really a sort of a destination market where shoppers could come. Um, I didn't mention that, uh, we've spoken with Laura Colbert, who is the executive director of Elawa. Um, Laura's been very supportive of this idea in our conversations. She, um, grew up downstate. And suggested that we think about a Saturday, um, afternoon. So we would, um, propose doing this between three and seven P M. on Saturdays. And ostensibly, we could probably get this up and going, um, at the end of August, um, and run it through the first weekend in October. And, um, you know, I think that would be a lot of fun and, and we could really build on its initial, initial success. So, um, any questions?
Alderman Bushman.
First off, a big thank you. Uh, much appreciated your efforts to try and bring, uh, the community activity to the west side. As you were aware, uh, before the pandemic in twenty-nineteen, we did, uh, start down that process with three pop-ups. And they, they were successful, limited success. And then we had the vintage car show, which I'm happy to see is coming back again. And hopefully we'll have the mayor and Alderman Rubble there with their vehicles to, to show them off, uh, again. So that sort of activity is most appreciated. It certainly adds to the, uh, camaraderie that we're looking for within our community. And, uh, uh, again, thank you. Uh, I had an earlier discussion today with Alderman Weber, who advised me of a ice cream truck she had arranged to bring into her community. Now there I was disappointed. I was not aware of it, so I didn't feel I was invited. She promised me the next one I will be. But there, you know, obviously it's important how you get the message out to the people and, uh, you know. Uh, I, again, thank you very much for what you're doing here.
I just have a comment, uh, and I'm not quite sure who to direct this to. But, but we had a farmer's market in the east train lot for a number of years and, you know, just kind of curious, um. You know, why that stopped and, you know, what the, the feedback was and. You know, um, it's always hard to assess demand for things like this, but we can certainly like. Try to figure out lessons learned, at least from the east side of, um. You know, of what went well there and what didn't. Um, so I'm just kind of curious how, 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 how fully baked is this idea? And are you working with staff to kind of? Figure out the logistics and the vendors and all that kind of stuff. I'm just trying to, like, how is this going to be pulled off? Because I think it, I'm just curious how, how that's going to work.
Uh, I, I, I can address some of that. I mean, the. Then Jason, maybe, I don't know if Kathy's still on, um, but you could address sort of the, the first part of Alderman Preschlag's question. So, so certainly our, um, our, our committee, we have a committee that, um, is composed of, of nine members. We have, um, we have a subcommittee that has been conducting this sort of market research to, um, you know, understand what it is. That would enable, um, a new farmer's market, a pilot market, um, to be successful. Can we guarantee it's success? Obviously not, but I, but we have had a number of conversations, uh, with potential prospective vendors, um, who were very, very, um. Enthusiastic about the prospect of participating in the market in Westlake Forest. I, I don't know specifically why, um, how long the market on the east side of town, uh, ran, um, and why we discontinued it. I think that, uh, again, just as a resident going to the market, I, you know, I think that maybe there weren't, um, enough of the right vendors. I, you know, one of the things that we have determined is that you really have to have the right mix of vendors. You have to have a certain number of, of producers. Of, you know, produce and you have to have a certain number of, you know, in different types of categories and you actually have to, um, you know, you have to really very carefully, um. You know, know how, it's like merchandising, actually. You have to, you know, there's sort of a certain flow that has to be, um, set up on, I guess, the floor, if you will. So I think that we know, um, I, I, I don't have a list of key learnings from that time period. I, 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 again, I, I haven't really taken that next step. I wanted to see if this is something that, um, that the, the council. Has, has an interest in pursuing before we really start, um, getting into the, you know, the specifics of how to make this happen. Thanks, Kathy.
Yeah, if, if I could, could I, uh, because I, my questions are kind of along the same line. The very first thing when I, when you just shared this was. Didn't we do this for a number of years on the east side? Uh, and I love the fact that your, you know, your committee is bringing ideas and strategies. I mean, one of the things that pops in my mind immediately is, you know, are we coordinating with other city entities? I know. I have to look at my calendar, but I, it's going to be in direct conflict with, um. One of the festivals that we're doing up, um. Behind city hall, I think the Friends Foundation is putting on. And, um, although I, I understand you're getting support from Elawa, it, it sounds like it's, it's almost the same thing. And I, and man, I, you know, it sounds like a wonderful idea and I understand the motivation for, for trying to do this. Um. I'm lukewarm on it, you know? I, I love the, the, the thought process and kind of trying to incubate this. But I'm, I don't know. I, I guess I, I have just more questions than, than anything, so.
And I'll just note, I, I cannot speak to, uh, any past, uh, attempts at, at, uh, hosting a farmer's market. I may turn that over to Kathy, but. Certainly hearing some of the perspectives, um, or Alderman Weber perhaps has some perspective. I don't know if I was right handed on that or not. But, um, I do think, uh, you know, perhaps similar to some of the discussions that occurred with the food trucks, if this is, um. Viewed through the context of sort of a pilot, uh, to see how it works and understanding that, you know, we'll. Learn as we go and we'll get a better sense, I think, fairly early on from the community, whether there's support or not. You know, maybe I, I would just caution to look at it perhaps in, in that context rather than, you know, necessarily a long-term commitment. We may find it to be very successful and, uh, want to continue it into the future, but, uh, I don't know. Kathy, anything you want to add about the former east side market?
Sure. Um, we did try a farmer's market in a couple of locations. For a couple of years, we had it just east of city, I'm sorry, just north of city hall in the parking lot, and then we moved it over near the train station. What we heard from, from many vendors, farmers, um, as well as some residents is that we know that Lake Bluff. Does a great job with their Friday farmer's market. We know that Elawa does a, a great job with their farmer's market. But I think at, on the west side, there is an opportunity to have some kind of a market. Maybe we don't bill it as a farmer's market, but I think especially with, uh, some of the new businesses located, uh, along Wa- Waukegan Road. Bring those in, using some of the food trucks that have got, gotten licenses from us. Bringing in, as Alderman Karas said, uh, baked, baked goods or some artisans. This, this could be more of a Saturday market type activity. Uh, we know the train station, it, it's a large empty lot right now. Uh, there may be the opportunity to do some winter events in the train station itself. Maybe there's an opportunity to coordinate, uh, with some of our not-for-profits. Um, as, uh, the city manager said, I, I think, um, it, it's an idea that we've been kicking around for a long time. It certainly is an idea that's called out in the comprehensive plan and looking at, uh. Doing this for a few weekends as a pilot this year will really help us to know what, what's the right composition. Uh, maybe there's some entertainment. We, uh, play to the kids. Uh, senior cottages are right there. There could be an opportunity. So I, I think there's. I, I think it's worthwhile to explore it and then step back after the first of the year and, and think about whether it's worth going forward. And if so, what form it might take. So that's my two cents.
Alderman Weber.
A couple of quick things to add. Um, when the farmer's market was in downtown, uh, east side Lake Forest. I think also there was some feedback from some of the, uh, merchants already in town that it was a kind of direct competition. Um, I think at one point when it was behind city hall, that kind of looped in, uh, Amadee and his, uh, market right there. And then it was across the street. I think parking was an issue. We also have a running club that kind of runs, is running right through. So there was maybe perhaps maybe some safety issues with. Cars and parking and, and all of that. Uh, I think. Westlake Forest, I think, looking at the time of day that they're looking at as well as the day of the week. We are avoiding some of that repetitive shoppers who already go to, to Lake Bluff as well as to Elawa. I think Elawa does have a, a pretty, um, direct, uh, group of people that they have coming weekly. And just from having the ice cream truck, uh, over in Lasker Estates last night. It was one neighbor and myself who passed out some flyer. We went door to door and left a flyer. And it was not a drive around. It was a one stop on a corner and we had incredible turnout last night. Um, of people in the neighborhood and so many new families with young kids. That I'm not sure they're going to make it to. East Lake Forest, um, or to Lake Bluff or to Elawa. I mean, we have a lot of new people in Westlake Forest. And right now with traffic, it's fifteen minutes plus to get across town. Um, so I think it really poses a nice opportunity to bring some diversity and vitality. Uh, and just a quick note, I think what really separates Lake Forest from Lake Bluff and Highwood is. We have really two business districts, um, and we, we do not have one. Couple block long radius with businesses on both sides. So it's just a very different city and we're much larger. So I, I think the pilot program is great and I commend Alderman Karas and her committee for all of her due diligence and I look forward to seeing the next step.
I can make one, one last comment though, Mayor, and then I'm going to sign off on this, you know? One, one of the things that you just said that resonated with me is that. Is the last farmer's market in town, they felt like they were competing with local entities. I mean. Sunset Foods is right across the street, folks. Um, I, you know, and again, Jennifer, don't get me wrong. I think you, you guys are really going in the right direction with it, but, um. Maybe it demonstrates a little lack of sensitivity, especially making those comments that, and, uh, you know, I, I think keep doing what you're doing because it's great. And we definitely want that and it's very helpful, but, uh, um. If we're going to be sensitive, let's be sensitive to, to all of our retailers. Just my thoughts.
Well, I can just say, Alderman Gashkarian, it's not going to stop me from shopping at Sunset Daily. Just me personally. Bill knows us by name.
Yeah. Alderman, Alderman Morris has been trying to get a.
Yeah, I'm trying. It's, it's tough to get in there. Um, I, I like what Jennifer's doing. I think the food trucks will add a lot of vitality to the thing. I think the east side failed in my opinion. There wasn't enough. It was too small and people didn't really think about going there because there wasn't the variety that Alderman Karas is talking about in her definition of a market. So it's not just the produce and, and the issue of Sunset, but it's the other categories of merchandise that you've talked about. If you can get enough of that, then it creates a sense of gravity that will, I think, draw more people into it. And I think the food trucks would be a big plus for that. So I think it could be successful.
Alderman Rommel.
There we go. Um. I do remember the east side farmer's market. I think, uh, and if someone can correct me if I'm wrong. But it tended to be the same vendors who were at Lake Bluff on Friday. And so people sort of felt that it was what they didn't sell on Friday, that they were selling on Saturday. And it, and, and I'm not sure that they had the same variety of vendors. And so it wound up being sort of a poor sister to the Lake Bluff farmer's market, which was so well-developed and really thriving. So, and, and in response to, to some of the other comments that have been made, if you can. Make this a little different than a typical farmer's market. So my ears perked up when I heard you say local artisans. My ears perked up when you talked about food trucks. Um, uh, craft people there so that there is something to distinguish it from. The Lake Bluff farmer's market and from the offerings at Elawa. I'm not sure what that is. But I do think, and, and actually you and I have talked about this, there are, uh, artisans throughout Lake Forest. Who are making things in their homes and they show up when you go to the Saint Mary's Bazaar or some other functions. Um, and they're really quite talented and this could be a nice showcase for them, which would distinguish them right away from what the offerings are. At, uh, at, at Lake Bluff. So let's try and, and do something that is, it is different. And, uh, will attract a different group of people. And I do think our demographics are changing from when we did that last farmer's market. There are more young families who, um, you know, really might thrive doing this. So I'm all in favor of, of giving this a try and seeing if we can make it go. But I would encourage your committee to look at, how can we make this different and even better than some of our competitors? And, uh, that would be my comment.
Yeah, I, I just.
Alderman Preschlag?
Yeah, I just wanted to, um, okay, I gotta say how I felt on it, but yeah, I totally agree with Alderman Rommel. You know, I think, you know, startup one-on-one is product market fit and understanding branding and. You know, like why this thing's unique and cool. We, we, and we have some hypotheses. We have to learn from the east. We did it. We've done it. And there's outlined communities and, you know, there is a mobile market, um, but, you know, our friends. Surveys, you know, we can, you know, try to assess demand and then just experiment, just like we are with the food trucks on events and take an entrepreneur's approach to this. But I think it's really important to make sure we're. Having all of our heads on this, um, and it's just not isolated onto a subcommittee. So, you know, Kathy's got a, a wealth of experience. Everybody on this board does and has ties into the community and, and we, you know. Are the cheerleaders for the community. So, you know, I think we got to kind of ask our friends and so on and so forth. And, you know, just, just see what that untapped demand is and, and try to create something interesting. And, and, and take it a pilot entrepreneur approach. But, um, I would just be in favor of trying something, just, you know, that we're just being thoughtful on what's worked well in the community and not. We're, you know, engaging staff, um, appropriately to, to, just to make sure we have. Um, all of our collective knowledge here, um, to bear and, uh, just appreciate the, like all of our subcommittees, you know, it's, it's hard work. And, um, if it's public works or the environmental or this one, you know, it's just important that we all get on the same page. And I appreciate you bringing it forward and look forward to trying it and see what happens.
Thanks, Jim.
Well, it sounds, I, so the, the real, the real question here is or was, uh, and I think we have our answer. You know, is this something we would really want to take, you know, a significant amount of staff time to get behind and, you know, put the, put the infrastructure in place to actually have it. Happen and then also, you know, be sustainable over time. And I think there seems to be pretty broad consensus to give it a try, um, and, uh, and then, you know, try a few weeks, figure out schedules. Avoid conflicts with other entities, uh, all those, all those things, but, uh, uh, and do something different. And I, 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 that's the part of it that I like. I like the idea of it. Maybe having, you know, a significant amount of food that you could purchase right there that keeps people there through early dinner hour. And maybe have some of the local restaurants that are right in the neighborhood participate in that. Along with Sunset and along with Elawa and along with the artisans and, you know, make it, make it different. Um, so.
So, I think. Sorry to interrupt, Mayor, but, so what's the lift on it? Because I haven't even thought about the cost to operate other than staff time. But I mean, do we anticipate like a big lift or an investment to do some of? I mean, do we anticipate like a big lift or an investment to do some of this? I, I'm not really thinking about it on costs. Kathy, is there any sense on like what it costs the city to, to run the east one and just?
You know, I can speak a little bit from the staff perspective. I do think, you know, hearing council support and direction for, you know, staff to put resources behind this is very helpful and I think it's very doable. I would hope to be able to leverage obviously the talent and the energy and enthusiasm of, of the volunteers on the marketing committee. I know in a lot of other communities, including those I've worked in before, those neighboring communities of ours that have successful farmer's markets, it's pretty common to have sort of volunteer committees do a lot of the legwork and, you know, seeking out or advising on vendors for the market. Ultimately, staff will have a role to play in sort of a, you know, sort of a signup or registration process to ensure, depending on like the vendor, that there, if there's health licenses required through the county, that all of those things are in line. So really it's more of a, a staff time than a financial commitment. I think the one thing we would have to work out, you know, with, with members of the committee is that most farmer's markets now have an actual market manager who is just onsite day of to handle, you know, logistics in terms of staging of the vendors to deal with, you, you hope it doesn't happen, but deal with the occasional conflict between vendors or with a patron. And so, you know, details we can work out here in the future, but, but obviously it sounds like that, you know, the marketing committee's already done a lot of research and legwork as to potential vendors and we'll kind of, you know, follow that lead and work with, with the group moving forward.
You know, I think that ice cream truck might be a real draw that time on a Saturday afternoon. I think, you know, bringing that in, why not stop there on a Saturday afternoon with your kids? That was my second thought though. My first thought was, is this something we might want to offer alcohol during? I mean, we're, we're offering it at the beach. I'm just throwing it out there.
You guys tell us.
Well, the mayor was nodding his head.
I think it's an open, I think it's, it's an opened, it's a, it's a tabula rasa here. I think, so Alderman notes, you wanted to say something? You're, you're muted.
Jason or Kathy, who oversees the Deerpath Art League Festival? Like who, like is, is staff doing that or who is? Because it's facing a lot of the same logistic matters, probably on a larger scale, certainly at this stage, but.
You want to take it, Kathy? Go ahead.
I, I was just going to say, staff works closely with the Deerpath Art League, but, but they manage it, they have their own volunteers, they, they plan it, they bring in their, they, they sign up their artisans, their artists, but staff provides support such as barricades and we strategize early on about access and things like that. We did in the past have a market manager and that was a staff person. So it was someone onsite. We also charged a minimum fee for vendors to register in the past and I think it was $50 or something like that. So, but, but I think a lot of these details, we just need to talk them through, decide, you know, what, what we want to try out and, and then see this morph as, as we attract interest and see what people want.
And when you say vendors, that would include the food vendors that are at the Art League Festival?
Correct. And, and we do currently, based on council's action, we do require mobile vendors to get permits. And we actually have heard from Lake County recently that they've, they've found a number of vendors who are not licensed with them. So I, I think our process of assuring that we know who the vendors are and that they're properly licensed for those that offer food is, is important, but we can fold that all into our process.
You know, I could even see this morph into like a Kris Kringle, Kringle Mark in the winter or something, or, or a pumpkin fest in the fall and something around Thanksgiving, you know, maybe sort of specializing around some of the holidays and, and really, you know, get some energy behind some of it.
That's a really good point, Alderman Rumel. I think, you know, one of the takeaways that we have ascertained from our conversations with vendors is that everyone's looking for an opportunity to continue selling after the fall season. So there's certainly going to be an opportunity if we succeed in this pilot. But I just want to thank everybody for your feedback and constructive comments. They're really, really helpful and, you know, in advance to Jason for the city staff support and, and trying to put together a, a plan that we can execute. I think that there's really, you know, our success, you know, there, there's really two key aspects here. And obviously there's, there are a lot of farmer's markets and, you know, we'll study the, you know, the best among those. So there's sort of a formula in place on how to curate a highly successful market. And then there's sort of the, you know, the creative side of it. How's, you know, how do you, you know, identify, you know, what people really want? And again, it's, I, I imagine that because of where it's located, we're really going to drive traffic not only from the city of Lake Forest, but from Deerfield and Libriedville and Vernon Hills and other areas nearby that are interested in, in doing something on a Saturday afternoon. So I, I, you know, I again, can't guarantee anything, but I, I really do think that we know how to put together a very successful market.
Okay, well, go forth and change the world.
One market at a time.
Any other comments from council members?
Just thank you Jennifer for bringing this forward and for all the work you've been doing for the city. Doing a fabulous job with the marketing campaign from what I'm seeing.
With that having been said, I believe it's time for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. The meeting is adjourned.
In person next month.
Happy summer.